All right, uh, Roethlisberger Hall.
Here.
Greg Bennett, here. Michael Donald.
Yes.
Chris.
Yeah.
All right, uh, first duty, the elections, uh, election of a temporary chair. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, we will open it up for chair, for nominations per chair.
I'll nominate my man Joe's for chair.
Thank you. You have any other nominations?
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
What's the difference between the temporary and the chair?
Temporary is just to run the meeting until we elect the chair.
Okay.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds, so that was the shortest job I've ever had.
Wasn't even thirty.
Exactly, that was. In case we had a fight, I could, you know.
That's good.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, great, uh, election of a vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Steve Hirsch for, um, vice chair, he's been on the board for a couple of years. He's, uh, in- involved in looking at the numbers and asking diligence and, uh, questions. Uh, and I think he bring a nice bipartisan, um, look to the, uh, committee.
Good. You have any other nominations? I will nominate Rebecca O'Donnell, because she does have the longest seniority, uh, next to me on the board. Uh, and again, um, I'll try to be as polite about it as possible, but the last time we had her for Democratic vice chair, uh, he got taken off the board mainly because we work too closely together, so. As much as I respect Steve and love what he does work-wise, it might not be the best career for him, my humble opinion. So. Any other further discussion? Okay, well, just call over for Steve Hirsch.
Aye.
For Rebecca?
Aye, aye.
You can vote for yourself. All right, very good. All right, uh, approval of minutes and voting records for October twenty eighth. Anybody have any, anyone want to make a motion? Give it a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
First elect.
Uh, he's elected, um, obviously budget started, but. I'm all, uh, to thirty-one, you can pack it, we have that, um. The other, or I think the one that. I recognize. Ron Heidi, um, department has been awarded the government final officer certification. But this was the twenty twenty comprehensive. Um, this is the fifth year in a row that department's gotten an award, so. Want to recognize the great work that Ron Heidi's done and everybody deserves.
Congratulations.
I've got two big departments.
One on each side. You do.
A lot of hard work done behind you. Um, I'm sure everyone's aware, because, but I don't think, since we, since this board last met, we. Uh, that was a pre- that town meeting, so. It was, uh, probably, um, to get a, uh, by the center of the board. And, you know, Mike is very integral, all, um, having great.
Yeah, it was ten years of that, so.
Yes.
There's a lot of people bought that up.
They certainly had a lot of, uh, a lot of, you know, good things to say about.
Still getting here?
Okay. I'll speak up.
We're all going to huddle in the corner.
That's right. They still had lots of, you know, they had lots of great things to say about. Health of the community. Uh, with that, um, you know, that rating would be. Fail that we were in the process of putting together, uh, that did. Uh, that sale was done, uh, November ninth, and had we closed on it. The great news is we. To be. You're south of two percent. The true interest cost percentage of the. Well, the, uh, the. Well, competitively, you know, the whole, you know, it's, it's a pretty, uh. Element that they used to kind of figure out. And, uh, what the bits are, you know, kind of backing into the actual. Comparables around that same time, um, were, you know, around one point nine percent of what they were getting. Uh, we came in under one and a half percent. So, um, yeah, so, a very, uh, very successful issue. That covered, uh, not just the last round of body authorization that we just did, but. Or actually, when I mentioned, there was the, I guess it was early twenty twenty, just prior to the pandemic, twenty twenty. We never actually issued a body. What was it, October really, nine point eight?
Yeah, and there was a pretty.
Right, and I clapped it.
Uh, public participation? Any here? Offline?
Um, it's Debbie, can I just bring up, did you approve the credit balance, uh, that were on the agenda for the two thousand seventeen grand this year?
Yeah, we approved the consent calendar, which covered both.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, it's not very clear, thank you.
Anybody else for public?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, Nicholas Kapoor, one zero nine Meadows End Road, uh, speaking on behalf of myself only. Um, I just have to respond very quickly to the chairman's comments, uh, that were made during the election of the vice chairman just a few minutes ago. Uh, I think those comments are extremely presumptuous. Um, I don't think that we should be getting in the business of talking about the internal workings of political parties and how people are nominated for office. There is multiple ways for people to get their names on ballots through many ways, people have different options. And I think to assume the reason why someone was or wasn't put on a ballot in a public meeting is, uh, something that we shouldn't, a road we shouldn't be going down, and I could not let that go unaddressed, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Now, unfinished business, oh, we lost. Just please clean. This one out, there he is. I was just going to look for you, you were going, oh, okay. Oh, three-year model.
Three-year model, actually, I, I started modeling.
I know, that's what I was.
Twenty-three, twenty-three, so.
Perfect.
Um, as a progression of that, so, uh, we'll be adding, uh, rolling out, through this budget process, we can roll it out.
Right, and one of the things we had talked about to sort of, making the same page, is that even if we just hit the top, you know, eight or ten line items that will really cover. Right, very high level accounts.
Yeah, you don't need to model long.
No, we don't. You know, insurance, right. Debt service and that kind of stuff, start pointing them up.
So is this being done just as a mathematical exercise, or not looking at what the department might need or the town might need in terms of additional items? I can budget all this, or additional spending?
No, this is just mapping out, like, cost that we know, so, you know, we know contracts that are out two or three years, so those we can roll out, we know the debt service for the next few years with the assumptions. Um, it's at a very high level, we can run health insurance numbers, we can run those kinds of numbers. Now, it's just more of assuming, assuming status quo, what's, what it looked like two years from now, three years. Just so we can kind of look ahead, um, you know, for major bumps in the road.
So, Mike, is, like this Mary Hall speaking, is this going to be just on the operating expenses for both units for the board of education? Or is it also going to be on the anticipated, um, revenue space going to get off?
Uh, it's a great question, because we haven't mapped out the revenue, but we probably could get.
Ron wasn't.
Where they do that way.
It was including.
It's a little harder, because we have a lot of pieces that are under our control, the, like, the state numbers, we only get for two years on their budget. Um, so obviously, jumping on a third is a bigger subject.
Because your revenues, but your revenues coming in are going to be hopefully based on what you're anticipated or estimated after any expenses. Because you're going to set your mill rate to that, so the revenue comes in, so that's what I.
Right, but it's also, I mean, we also get a lot of our revenue from other places that are not within our control, which we want to map out. Because if that changes, obviously, that number will plug, and that's really a plug number at the end of the day.
Yeah, right.
The revenue from taxes is, because it's the last thing we can put together, right?
Yeah.
What do you need to do that, right? Exactly. So that's more of a plug number, then, I'm more interested in, if we know grants are coming away, or if we know the, the, something's being cut, we can foresee that a couple of years out. And also, the rating agencies have bugged us for years to be, you know, having a three-year rolling budget. And, you know, Rebecca's going to be a component of that as well, so we can put into that for a while, so. And it'll be a work in progress, I mean, we'll take a swag at it, and, you know, see how it looks in the.
You get a base line.
Correct. Correct.
Scenario.
Correct.
Okay.
Really, man, that's not great here.
Going to have to get a fixed.
Yeah, that's.
So, so, again, Mary Hall, so, so when we're doing the three-year budgeting forecast, okay? And I'm looking at some of the, you know, reports, this is my first time, so I'm, I'm going to ask a lot of questions until I understand fully, but could we also, Ron, possibly, and I'd be more than glad to, could we actually do an expense walk from, you know, what we anticipate expenses to be this year, not just the budget, but what our, our estimate is going to be against that budget? And then do a walk until.
For, for the current year?
Well, for the current year and the outer years, because with how your, what your total operating expenses are going to be, both the physical and board of education, and that's your actual, and then you're going to have inputs like cost of living adjustments, you're going to have impacted for full year higher coming in, because you may not have hired everybody right first than July first. You're going to have retirees, you're going to have new positions, you're going to have one-time specials that are going to be in your current year number, that aren't going to be in your outnumber. I just think it would help, okay, maybe display, you know, once we get the numbers, okay? Actually, we do go in expense block and out already, expense block to help us get from A to B to B to C to D. And I'd be willing to help with that.
Yeah, I, I think I'm trying.
I know, exactly, I think.
I mean, I could play it out, I could play it out.
So, so, I mean, the way the, um.
Um, I mean, I, I mean, I think what we can do is, we're going to, this is our first. We'll have to start at the high level. At least we're all in person, which is.
Can everybody hear it?
Joe Cobza, how does that sound?
I can hear you a little better now.
All right, thank you.
All right, yeah, that works.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so let me, let me respond first, because I, I thought Steve's point was, I could, I could see it morphing into that. Once we get the, once we get the base built, you know, certainly, you know, going through each department, maybe, hey, what do you, what do you see your needs one, two, three years out? I, I think, you know, whether that happens in the next three months, it may or may not, but I think once we get that base built, it can become more than a math exercise.
Right.
I mean, I think that.
As a planning tool.
As a planning tool, I think that's important, I mean, there was a discussion at the Board of Ed, the, at their last meeting, where they were talking about knowing, you know, as you, as you saw, that maybe they're going to need to add staff.
Right.
Right, for, for reasons of class, you know, um, offerings. And so, it would be nice, in my view, to capture that now and say, okay, two years from now, we may be looking at not, not just the rate of increase, the contractual rate for the X number of employees, but we're now going to have Y number of employees.
If they can provide us, that would be awesome.
Okay.
I think I know the guy.
Are you building from scratch, did Newtown ever pull, come through, or no?
Um, I, I'm building from scratch only because our model, I, it's basically, I took, uh, um, what, what's in UNIS and dumped it into Excel, and I'm going to build it from there, so. I'm not going, the model isn't, it's based by object code, as opposed to by account, it doesn't get as granular as accounts, but.
Okay.
As it's worse, we may have to, you know, get into a little more detail.
Yeah, I mean, I think once we have it on paper, we'll get a feel for how valuable it is, and also how easy it is to upgrade it.
Yeah.
So I think, I think the sooner we get something on paper, then we can really start manipulating it and getting to see what we want to say.
And Mary, I apologize, I, I'm not following you, so maybe we can, I don't know if we want to get into it now, or maybe offline, we can discuss.
I mean, I, what I would recommend is, let's wait till we, if we're going to have something in the next month or two.
Yeah.
Let's get it on paper, and then she can walk us through.
Exactly.
Literally, line by line, how, you know, you might get a model.
Yeah, what I can do around too, is I'll, I'll, I'll put, uh, something together in Excel, you know, ex, you know, laying out, you know, what I would, what I would maybe like to see, to share with the, with the group, you know, once we know what our estimated, um, twenty, twenty-two budget or actual is going to be, and then what twenty-twenty-three is going to be, and do that walk between the two of how we get there. And some of the high levels, like what is COLA, full year impact of new hires, special, special one times that happened in twenty-twenty-two that may not happen in twenty-twenty-three, then there may be something in twenty-twenty-four coming in, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Love it, I appreciate the help. All right, uh, new business, meeting dates, twenty-twenty-two officially.
There are proposed dates, I believe, that Heidi put together for you.
Yes, proposed dates are all for Thursday at six P M.
And also, just so everybody's clear, because we do it along the people, is, we can change anything we want. You know, we've been doing Thursdays forever, just because it's kind of an open night, we moved a couple of years ago to six P M, just because it was easier for staff to make it and do it, and I kind of like it, but again, it's open for discussions, I don't think we're married to anything, if somebody has a strong feeling or need.
I looked at the dates.
Speed now or forever.
They seem fine. But was the cycle like every third Thursday?
It's every third Thursday.
It is, every, it's every third Thursday.
Yeah, that's great.
There doesn't seem to be any conflict with, with any other holidays or anything, so.
Right, this, I didn't, I didn't quickly see any, I know sometimes we run into religious holidays or other holidays.
And I, and I looked at that.
Thank you.
So, um, not on, not on a Thursday.
I just have one conflict, it's actually next December on the fifteenth, for a work retreat, but we can cross that bridge next year.
December's my wife's birthday, so I might.
Yeah, we can always change a date, so.
So we can always juggle that, and, you know, I'd say half the time over the last ten years, we've killed December anyways, if there wasn't, I think, much going on. Yeah, so.
Yep.
I'd say we leave it the way it is, so if someone wants to make a motion to approve it.
I'm making a.
Go ahead.
These are motions, I will.
No, no.
I'll make a motion, I will make a motion to approve the date for twenty-twenty-three.
A second.
Any further discussion, there you go, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, uh, appointment of two pension committee representatives, so, um, the major boards each contribute two members to the pension committee. Um, I've been there, I've been the chairman of the pension committee since day one, so I would prefer to stay on. Uh, but we do have an opening, um, and Steve, if you would be interested, I would love to have you on that, and I think that might be a good, uh, place to put you on, unless somebody else has a strong feeling about it. Um, but I think you would fit in beautifully there, and it's only a quarterly.
Yep.
Meeting, so it's not too much, and we try to piggyback it on this one.
Yeah, I will be happy to do that.
Okay, all right, so anybody who doesn't know, then you're appointed. All right, review of the twenty-two twenty-two financial report. So basically, uh, Mary and everything else is new, we're going to, you know, I'll just let Ron call anything out that's of interest that he wants to point out, and then if anybody has any questions, that. T-mod or unusual, or we want some explanation, I will get that.
Ron, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
As I was looking through this today, um, I, I think I'm pretty clear on the year-to-date expenditures, but on the E and C requisitions.
So those are encumbered.
Okay.
So like, we'll sign contracts that run through the year, so we know what the set number is.
Right.
It's encumbered, it's locked down, we know what it's going to be.
Okay.
So it's, it's an obligation that a P O is in place for.
That's what I was going to ask, if a P O was in place.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, either a P O's in place or a requisition is in the hopper.
Okay.
It hasn't, it hasn't been approved yet.
But, but are you doing the P Os, because some of them are at a hundred percent already of the budget, okay? Is, is the P O to the budget number?
It would be, in, in a lot of cases, yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay, there could be, you know, a blanket open.
Okay.
So whether it all gets used.
Or whether it doesn't get used, okay, thank you.
But a decent amount of them are contractual, that we have an agreed set number on to them to.
And, and is it the responsibility of each of the, uh?
Departments.
Departments, I'm, I, of the departments, to actually update that to you guys and find you?
As, as far as the, the, the purchase order, the requisition gets put in, it's, it's all done through the accounting system.
Okay. By the department?
By the department.
By the individual department.
So they'll put the requisition in, the first level of approval is, on the, on the municipal side, is Heidi, then myself, and then the first elect. Okay, and it could get rejected at any level.
Thank you.
And then once it's approved by the first elect, and it's a purchase on. And there's a similar process on the, on the.
Mike, there's a few questions.
Great.
Um, Steve Hirsch, um, Ron, I'd like to, um, address the year-to-date budget report under the general fund revenue. Um, the packet, page twenty-seven, the report, page three, under other revenue, um, account number one four zero nine hundred miscellaneous. Um, what's, yeah, we're, we're, we're well over, I guess, uh, I mean, it's good news, it's revenue, but what, what caused that, number one, and number two, do we?
Was it the Kerma check? The Kerma check, yeah. We get a, uh, we get a, we get a, I guess you'd call it kind of a rebate, so to speak, from Kerma every year, and last year, uh, it was higher this year than it had, than it was last year, so we probably, we probably budgeted based on previous history, and it came in high.
So is that the, the sole entity in that line?
No, I think, I, I don't know if that's, I mean, usually if there's something that we can't categorize, like, this area, this stuff comes in, and. Yeah, it, it could be a lot, a lot of different things in this room, but the whole of it, that, and I think.
But it's likely to go up a little bit more over, over the course of the year?
Maybe.
Maybe, we don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the nature of the line, it was stuff that's, we can't always count on or anticipate, you know.
Okay, um, my next question are on the, uh, year-to-date budget report, the expense side. It's page thirty-two in the packet, page five of the report. Um, under the finance, um, salaries, there's three salary lines. Um, the one five zero 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 one is only twenty-two point eight percent of.
That's, that's my salary, so, but we have to do some budget transfers there, Steve, that's my, um, salary, that's going to be.
Shared.
That's going to be, some of that money is going to be moved to one five zero zero three. Um, and, and my portion of my salary is getting allocated over to the, you know.
Okay, and what, and the same, um, percentage number roughly is in one five zero 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 five. Who, who, who or what is that?
We were down with them.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that actually leads me to another question, a follow-up from the last time we met, Ken. When I was questioning salaries across the board, and you said there were a lot of vacancies. I, have we? Or, or some, have we, we staffed up for the various, I mean, we pretty well backfilled everybody, or?
In a lot of areas, I mean, we do have some, uh, openings, and now we have, you know, there's a couple more retirements that were announced. Um, police chief, uh, the chief building official, they're, you know, all retirement age, and they've, uh, so, I mean, it's kind of like, you know.
Okay.
There's, there's going to be, yeah, there's going to be some.
You're covered.
Yeah, I mean, um, we just hired, I'm just trying to think, we just, yeah, I mean, we brought on, you know, quite a few people in, uh, the last month or so, so.
Okay.
Lots are getting filled, yeah.
All right, my last question is, uh, on that same page, under I T, uh, account one five triple zero three, I T salary other. Nothing's been spent, uh, who, who or what is that?
That's, that's an allocation from the Board of Ed. So it's, it's I T, all of.
They're carried on their books, and then they move.
Carried on our books, and then allocated over, it's the reverse of my, my allocation, that just has not been done.
It just hasn't been reflected.
It's done, yeah, it'll, it's done twice a year, so if it's done, we should do.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, we've always done that.
But that, that number's pretty much spot on, yeah.
Yeah, I expected it to be spot on, I expected it to be, you know, forty-one percent or something, because that's how far we are into the year, so, okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Feel free.
I have a couple of questions, too, if you go to the year-to-date budget report under the human resources, the H R pension, one five three four one oh. Um, we've got still three hundred fifty-eight thousand, um, almost eighty, well, uh, about seventy-seven percent. What's, what's still to be spent there, Ron?
That's our actuarially determined employer contribution.
The employer contribution?
Right. Correct. Which we typically make at the.
In, in. May, may be.
Or, or ac- actually, what I, what I, what I'll do is I'll, I'll spread it out based on when, um, if the plan needs funds, we've been funding it with the contribution, so it doesn't impact the investments, so it's, it's typically done ratably through the year, with a catch-up, if, if any residuals left at the end of the year, we'll make it to balance.
So, can I ask a general question, then, so when we're, so when you put the budgets and the actuals into, into the UNIS report, when you establish your budget at the, at the, at the beginning of the year, are you doing it for the total year, or are you doing it on a month-to-month basis?
The.
The actual budget.
The actual budget is put in for the year.
Year.
So it's just a total year?
Yes.
Okay, have we ever thought of, have we ever thought of doing it?
Monthly?
Maybe not monthly, but maybe quarterly, so, so the hues don't look as, um, up and down?
Yeah.
No, because honestly, we don't have the staff for it.
I, I, we could say, yeah, you just. But, but that, but, yeah.
And honestly, uh.
I don't know if I've ever seen that done.
I've never seen it on the municipal side.
Yeah, I don't know if you just.
Yeah.
How about, Joe, how about on the Board of Education side?
No, it's, it's done the same way.
It's done the same way?
Yeah. There's no real decisions to be made on a monthly basis, so monthly reporting, you know, it's not like a corporation where you're going to run, see two months in a row, and you're going to make a decision, the decisions are made for the year, basically, so it's not, it's very, that's where it's very different from corporate accounting. very different from corporate accounting. We're not keeping score on a monthly basis, basically. We're just looking for trends that are not happening.
But there's some things that will happen at the beginning of the, of the period, and there's some things that are gonna happen at the end of the period.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So is there, is there any way to, to, uh, flag those or to, to make the review of the,
Encumbrances. That's what the encumbrances do.
Yeah. Like, like in that case, could we encumber the A D E C? We could. We could do that. So you know it's encumbered and, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody got anything else?
Okay, I've got one more. I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it.
Uh, on page four, human resources, one five oh six three oh, the insurance premium, the, the H R insurance, we're seventy-three percent already, uh, percentage used. Can you help me understand that?
You, you wanna explain it or you want me to?
We do encumbrances there, too. Um, like workers' comp and Laps, or they have been encumbered for the fiscal year. Um, our medical insurance is only encumbered up to, um, like December because we have to do a catch-up with employee contributions. We have not done the, uh, Board of Ed allocation for the workers' comp and Laps premium, so that would, um, have an impact on it, too. So we kinda, with the medical, we have to do it as, do it for like three to six months, depending, because we don't wanna go over budget on the medical and wait for the employees to catch up.
The, the employees, if we encumbered everything, we would be in the negative. And we'd run into the same problem on the Board of Ed side, um, because employees contribute, make their contribution through the year. So it wouldn't true up until June.
Is it taken out of their, is it taken out of their salaries that are paid?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
It's fine, I'm sure, so we make sure.
While we're on that, can I ask a, a question I wasn't sure if I was gonna ask, but, uh, on the next line down, the FICA and, and Medicare, is there some reason we don't encumber anything there? When, when obviously we know roughly what it's going to be?
Yeah.
The time?
We don't encumber payroll.
Okay.
So Heidi, this is Mary again. In the, in the salary lines in all of the departments, it's just the base salary. All of the benefits like the, like the, um.
It's base salary plus like longevity that are built into there.
Okay. So payroll with holding taxes, FICA, you know, all of that, fudus, fudus, it's not included in there?
In, in the department?
Yeah.
No.
In the H R.
It's in the H R numbers. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. We shall move on to tax. Let's go. Deb, can you hear me?
Unmute yourself, Deb.
Mike, could I, could I just ask one other thing? Was there anything else, Ron, that, that you felt needed to be brought out? I know that Mike asked you that earlier and we started asking questions.
Yeah, no, not really. Um, you, you guys, uh, you guys grilled me pretty good there. Um, no, there's, 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 there's nothing, uh, of significance. It's out of whack right now.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb, can you hear us? Did we mute her? She has to unmute herself, I believe.
Did we mute the speaker, though?
She should be coming through the phone.
She's still showing, she's still showing up to mute us.
There you go. Deb?
Just including.
You open that, turn it off.
Is there a mute and change it, please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it get that on?
I don't know what's there. She's there.
Deb, if you can hear us, can you unmute?
Do they send out supplementals in December, do you know?
Or.
Taxes, like, yeah.
Um.
Motor vehicles.
Motor vehicle supplement, yes. Motor vehicle supplement, which are, seem very well.
Mm-hmm. Tremendous.
I mean, we could walk through, uh, Deb's report, she's in the.
She just, she just hung up. Maybe she's calling back in.
Right. You can walk through it, Ron. Pretty straightforward.
Skip and come back?
Well, we can skip and come back.
She's not here, is she?
No, she's.
So in, included in your pack are the, uh, we didn't have a meeting last month, so October and November's, uh, collection reports are included in the packet. Um, if you go onto page two of the, of the, uh, November, uh, packet with the graphs on it, uh, the colors, you know, you can see we're tracking, um, fine real estate at fifty-one eighty-seven, um, personal properties at fifty-five and motor vehicles.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, yeah, so.
Big?
Yeah. I mean, the big one, obviously, is, is the real estate, which is tracking fine.
Mm-hmm. And that's, uh, Ron, this is Mary again. That's because, uh, the, uh, second half of the bills will be due, so hope.
Correct.
That'll close up.
Correct.
Yep.
Is there anything delinquent from the first half of the year?
Oh, I'm sure there is. Yeah, so, um, if you go, um.
I didn't know where to look for it, to try.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, the front, the issue is that, that delinquencies will be offset by people who have paid their full amount in July. So, you know, there's a balance there. There's a leveling out.
Actually, I'm not sure we could take that out of her report.
No.
I was gonna say, I don't think you can.
But it's, it's certainly, uh.
Because the problem is her number includes people that have paid in full, so.
Yeah.
That, that's probably a number she could, she could get.
Be able to speak to it.
You go.
Yeah.
She could get it, for sure.
But we'll have you on that after February, because.
After, after the, after the, uh, February, after the, so taxes are paid, anything not paid is basically.
Right. And then we track that through the end of the year. And it's actually been running a lot lower than it used to in the past years. I mean, it used to be in the low ones. And I think last year it was around nine hundred. And it's always, as we use that number to budget, when we're doing our budget, we use that number to budget pay a prior, you know.
Prior year taxes.
Prior year taxes when we budget. So we'll take a set percentage of that number. So we'll review that number during budget, see if we know where at, assume the.
And to make sure your collection's right.
Correct. And make sure our collection rate is correct, too. That's the real fund me.
Yeah.
All right. Well, the treasurer is on vacation, we know, right?
Treasurer's on vacation. He did leave, leave a, uh.
A red government.
An email. That's, uh, I, I left his email, um, which will be his treasurer's. We, we just finished rolling the CDs, so, um, again, trying to grab interest from.
Point two.
So how many different CDs do we have right now?
Three?
Is it three?
It's, it's, they were invested at three times, but I think it's actually more than three CDs. I think they're broken up.
Yeah. So, so the CDs themselves then are all laddered?
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he had mentioned that. Yeah, that he's gonna ladder it.
Right. I just didn't recall the number.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Last piece is public schools and superintendents. Do you guys wanna roll that together? Tag teaming?
Yeah, there's, you know, unless anyone has any questions on the, uh.
Fund activity.
Yeah, so right, right now, and I, I will just say, right now, included in the current year numbers are, are some of the, uh, items that will be likely pulled out and accounted for separately in some of the current, the COVID grants. Um, that hasn't been discussed in too much detail by the split of the Board of Education, so. But th- there's nothing, nothing tracking badly in the current year.
So, Ron, this is Mary again. When is there, is gonna get pulled out? Is it gonna get pulled out of the budget?
It's, right now, we're, we're, we're talking, yeah, the discussion over the next, uh, month or so will be to discuss on where those are actually gonna get accounted.
So, so out of the sixty-one million, some, some will come off out of the budget?
Uh, some, yeah, the budget's not gonna change. Some of the stuff is actually being paid out of the budget. And it's gonna likely be account, uh, covered by some grant money.
So we will spend under?
No, this money was not money that was budgeted, to be fair.
It was not budgeted?
Correct.
And is that gonna be available for the twenty-three? Is that, is that grant, or is that grant money for?
Some of the, the grant money does.
Two years.
It is two years?
Yes.
So I, I guess, I guess I have a question for Joe. Uh, Joe, this is Steve Hirsch.
Hey, Steve.
So I guess my question is, i- is the board planning to come forward to us formally to ask us to do something other than fund these additional positions with the grant money so that you could use the grant money for the, um, auxiliary or additional programming that you talked about?
I think that'll have to be, uh, discussed probably at this board meeting coming up, uh, Steve.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think they've addressed it at the board.
No, I don't, no, they, they, they haven't yet. My concern, obviously, is if they don't address it, we can't address it regardless of what we choose to do. And therefore, it won't be available in the second half of this year if we wanted to fund it some other way so that they could use the grant money for some of that remedial, um, you know, program. So, okay.
I mean, it, it would require a special appropriation, which I think.
But we're, we're not, we're not gonna do anything without a request from the board of ed.
You can't.
So, so, so my question is, are, are they inclined to for, you know, be forthcoming? And I guess the answer is we'll see what happens at their next scheduled board meeting on Monday.
The dilemma is to, you know, as of now, we haven't requested any reimbursement.
All right. Joe, you wanna, uh, bring us up to date?
Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody. Uh, just wanted to, just keep this group apprised of our budget, uh, for next year, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I presented the budget to the Board of Education, you know, the superintendent's budget to the, to the Board of Education on December sixth. Our process starts incredibly early. Uh, and what I've learned, uh, over the past couple of years is that it's a marathon, it's not a spring. You know, we start developing, I'm sorry, our school, for all intents and purposes, starts September first. And, you know, a month later, or six weeks later, I'm asking the principals and the, you know, the, the various directors to meet with their staff, to meet with their instructional leaders and whatnot, to start gathering a budget to be put together, to be presented to the, uh, to the Board of Education for December, for December. So it's incredibly early. But, you know, I'll give you the, kind of the, the Reader's Digest version of, of where we are right now. Um, we've come out so far with a five point three nine percent increase, uh, over this, uh, current year. And I just really, uh, you know, I know you guys don't get into the line items of things, but I just wanna explain what the main drivers are to that increase right now. And, uh, you know, as you can imagine, the main drivers is always, the main parts of the Board of Education budget is always salaries and benefits. But the main drivers for this increase is in salaries and benefits because we're dealing with two, uh, two things that are really taxing our human resources, and that's increased enrollment. And the other thing that's, that's really taxing us is the social, emotional well-being of our students. Uh, if we just look at enrollment for a second, uh, you know, I won't go into all the details, but, you know, from last year when I presented the budget to this year when I presented the budget, we have a hundred sixty-eight more kids in the Monroe Public Schools. A hundred and sixty-eight kids spread out around amongst twelve grades would not be too, you know, it would, it would definitely create pressures, but it, it would be a little bit more manageable. The problem is of our one hundred sixty-eight new students, a hundred and forty-six of them are at the elementary school. So we have this huge block coming up through the elementary schools where it's most difficult to try to absorb them. You know, at the middle school and at the high school, you have several sections of courses, you have different options, you have different electives. At the elementary school, it's, it's bodies and seats with a classroom teacher. So that's, um, you know, that's a big driver for this year. And then the other piece is, and I, I know I've said it, I think to this group already, too, is, you know, our, our kids are hurting right now. And, you know, we're, we shouldn't be surprised by that. They haven't, you know, had a regular year of school now in a number of years. And I keep arguing, and I, I think people know, based on especially what's going on right now, you know, this isn't a regular year of school. And so it's gonna be a while before they have that. And, uh, we have some pretty significant social and emotional needs that we're trying to meet, um, you know, especially trying to meet those needs in our, in district where we know, you know, we could do things in the, you know, in a more cost-effective way. But also, uh, we, we're really confident that we can provide the best services for our kids in-house. And that's what we're trying to do here. So th- those are the two big drivers right now. And, um, that's where we are. So I, I know it's got a little ways to go. It will get over to Ken at the end of January. The Board of Ed has a meeting this Monday night. And then two scheduled meetings in January, January fourth and January eighteenth, before they have to finally adopt the, uh, budget to go to the first class. And that's all I have, folks.
Okay. Awesome. Appreciate, uh, appreciate you keeping us up to speed and, uh, you know, know the six weeks ago by quickly will be on our desk by the way, you know.
Hey, Joe, Joe, this is Mary Hall. I have, I have another question. Uh, in the twenty, in the twenty-two numbers, uh, do you anticipate a overage or, or an underage, uh, against the budget? You know, last year you had a surplus, we had a surplus in the V O E of about two million dollars. What do you see this year?
Uh.
So do you want me to answer that or?
Yeah, Ron, you're probably better off. I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, so I don't, I, I, I expect pretty much break even, okay? Now, having said that, I think, um, um, we'll have a clearer picture come January, February. I, I think if there, if there, if there's one point of concern, it's probably, um, you tell me, right? I mean, right now, we are not, we're not locked in on either, actually, I'll say this to both sides, we're not locked in on fuels on either side. So there's a little bit of an exposure there. And, you know, back, back, you know, so, uh, January, February, March.
And so the winters.
Yeah. And we're, you know, so nat gas, there, there's some exposure for heating fuels in that gas.
Are we going to be locking in?
We're not, probably, likely not this year.
Probably not, I mean.
The consortium, you know, a part of, kind of, a part.
We're working on it, but. We're not, we're not the only one in this.
I did not, I did not realize the consortium had, had ended, but.
Well, we, whatever.
So Mary, to answer your question, that's a little bit of an unknown at this point, but.
What about, because I was looking at the Board of Educat, you know, the Board of Education budget pages, and it seems that the, um, aides and the custodians are down from, can you explain that?
Um, actually, let me, um, so spec, right now, Joe, I mean, special ed is tracking very well. So over the entire budget, we'll probably be fine. I mean, there are some stress points. There's also some, you know, I mean, special ed could change. I mean, special ed could change next month, but right, right now, it's, it's tracking very well. Joe, right now, AIDS, AIDS is, AIDS is tracking, it's at about a third of the budget, I believe?
29.
Yeah. So I don't know if...
Do we have any...
So this, this is through November, so it's...
Five divided by 12, right?
Yeah.
41%.
But it's also, so with, with the AIDS, it's also, it's school year, it's, what are we, September, October, November?
Right.
So it's... Yeah, sorry, we're left, yeah.
Yeah, probably right on there.
Right.
Percentage of the school year.
Because, yeah, AIDS are, AIDS are not 12 months people.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Ron, anything else on your side? The Board of Ed head?
I think, yeah, sorry to cut you off there, Joe, I was just...
No, that's all right, that's all right.
Those should be home roads today.
Yes, we're getting away nice one.
All right, I think we're all good. Want to make the motion?
I'll move to your chair.
Senator?
Thank you very much.